Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Let us stay our day bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory of it forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No. Roll call please.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to accept the amendment, please?
Motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Mr. Humphrey. Roll call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
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 I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Motion.
And motion, do I have a second? Brad Dudley with the motion. We will get downstairs, we won't be down there very long.
No.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
And it is...
Six point three.
With public participation, I asked to call in the high school first. Did I just take this off while you're thinking?
All right. Just to kind of give you guys an idea of what this is going to look like in a building, I've been asked to give you kind of a summary of what our protocols and plan will be for this year. I'm just, I'm going to touch real lightly on it, I'll let you go through it in your own time, but ideally, you know, last year, every school in the state had about 12 hours, little over 12 hours to prepare a plan for distance learning, right? Considering that, you know, I think we made the best of a bad situation. But in the meantime, we've had a lot to learn from. So, starting this year, we were able to take those things, create a plan that I think, assuming we are in session, will keep kids and staff safe. Ideally, if we're in session, we're giving students and parents two options. Either they can be traditional, in the building, with that and precautions that are listed there, or they can do our online program as annuity, which is what most people call A+. It's a different program than the old A+, but it's the same thing. What we are going to do this year to make the process smoother, because we know students will be going back and forth, is the teachers are going to use some of those first 11 days to sit down and map out their curriculum, which we will tie into the online system. So if we have students going back and forth, we should be at the same place regardless. We've also designated two high school staff members who will be available throughout all work hours for students K through 12. Have their parents to contact with questions, so we can take some of the pressure off the parents. If we are in the building, if students are in the building, we've also changed the custodial cleaning schedule. So one person is dedicated every day to disinfecting all surface areas. Last week, I met with the health department and our cleaning company. We've got a plan where the health department said at this point, they think it is the safest they've seen thus far. So we feel pretty good about that too, and that's outlined more in depth on there. Most of our early PD, those initial 11 days, should you approve it, is going to be on how it will look if we go remote. We wanted to make this, as you'll read in there, as smooth as possible. So if we have a lot of ups and downs this year, as we may, we can go back and forth between remote and in-person without students losing ground and with teachers already prepared. We're going to spend those initial 11 days putting everything online, getting students set up in Google Classroom. So if we get a call like we did last year at four o'clock, you're out tomorrow. Students, staff already know what they're doing, we move right into it. When it's over, they can come back and we won't miss a beat. If students, if we do go remote, what we're going to do this year, also take some of the pressure off of parents and at the same time, be able to hold students more accountable, keep attendance at a higher level. We're going to have students log in at the same time they would have had their class typically. So if Lindsey or Davis has a first period class with John Eperson, right? And seven fifty-five is the typical start time when we're in session. If we go remote, they'll be asked to log on at seven fifty-five every day. Mr. Eperson will take attendance, just like they're sitting in his classroom. He'll be on so he can, you know, provide the lesson for the day, answer questions. You know, we've been training them on the two streams, so he can draw things up, they can see it. Ideally, we want remote to look as much like typical school as possible. Obviously, it's much better if you can be in the classroom, but if not, we've tried to get it as close as possible. The only problem that will come up, I'm sure you're all thinking, is the internet. And that's, that's a problem everywhere. We've got some district plans that Mr. Gold is working on. We are also going to have staff in the building no matter what. So, you know, we can make the packets they hand out, which will solve some of that. We're also setting up Mondays, everybody's going to have office hours. So if students want to call between eleven and twelve every day, or ten to twelve, I believe.
Ten to eleven.
Yeah, we just said that today. If they want to call between ten and eleven every day, teachers are available to answer questions. They want to meet, depending on the circumstances, there is help there. So, we think with that, we've got the remote as close as possible too. And if we have to go remote, we're not going to lose ground like we did last year. That achievement gap won't get any larger. We also heard the need for better communication. The online courses is going to handle a lot of that. You know, all students are going to meet with all teachers every day, in theory. From an administrative point of view, I'm going to start putting out videos on a YouTube page we created monthly. If we go remote, we'll try to do it probably bi-weekly, just to let people see us, you know, give updates. I'm hearing boys, hey, this is what's going on. You know, the all-call system lets you do one minute. It's hard to get very much information across in one minute. That's why when you get notes, you hear it cut off at the end and everything. You know, you just can't do it. That's one of those things we learned last year during that. So, we're hoping with that, communication's better. That was something we did hear parents say. And this isn't a perfect plan, you know, there isn't a perfect plan out there. And there's going to be loopholes and everything. We think we have made it as safe as possible. But I ask you guys, I also put it out to the staff today. If you see things, you have ideas, you know, get in touch with us. We want to keep open dialogue throughout the year. We're going to get it out to the community soon. We hope to say anything from them, you have a question?
Yeah, and will there be any hybrid? A kid might go a couple of days a week and...
We're asking nine weeks, nine-week commitment. Yeah, now, of course, there's some...
So they have to commit one way or the other for nine weeks?
And if they want to go online, there's a form to fill out. We'll talk with the parents and explain that, so... Yeah, but we're asking for a nine-weeks commitment, so...
And every school's going to be different, obviously. You know, the high school can do a lot of things that a K-2 building can't do. So, every building's going to look a little different. I mean, the high school's able to do that, but, you know, to do that with K-2 is probably going to be a little more difficult, but, you know, we'll speak on that.
Absolutely, yeah. Just to give you an idea of overall what it's...
No, it's a great point.
And I will say, you know, like a lot of other crises, it leads to innovation things. Well, it's a tough situation, I think we'll come out of this much stronger safety-wise and instructionally. Because of course, you know, it forces you to innovate, you know, not a building and a district. I think we're much better today than we were last year.
Thanks.
I had one quick question. I've had a concern, I can't talk through this. I struggle just putting it on. With the Monday, I had somebody reach out to me. Are Mondays for cleaning, we're going to clean every day?
Yes.
Mondays are deep clean. I go into this...
We're disinfecting every night. Mondays will be deep cleaning. We're also going to use that with staff, but we'll have them separated while that's done. And this cleaner we set up with the health department, if it's on the surface for 10 minutes, it dries and leaves no residue. There's no asthma conditions associated with it, no flame issues associated with it. So as long as we remove people for a minimum of 10 minutes, it fills everything on the surface.
Yeah, the concern with this individual was, are we only cleaning Mondays? I knew better, but right now, it's not a question.
Glad you did.
Yeah, so we're going to clean every day. Mondays is going to be a more intense...
Correct. Absolutely. And there's some policies in there for teachers as well, you know. Multiple students are using a device, it has to be wiped down between uses, you know. We're really trying to limit that. We've cut out the use of water, foul stuff, there's a lot of that in there. And you can tell them as well, that'll be out to the community here probably next week.
Okay, good. Thank you.
No. I just want to go next, because our middle school plan is very, very similar to his too. You know, I met with him in the health department last week, and actually some cleaning supply vendors and things as well. And so, we're similar, obviously every building's slightly different, you know, in terms of space and size and, you know, day-by-day operations, obviously. But in terms of what you're going to find in that packet, because I reviewed it with them as well, we're going to be very, very similar, you know, in terms of what we're asking staff to do. We met at that meeting this summer. We kind of are on the same page in terms of what our expectations are going to be for staff. When we do the remote learning, it's going to be almost identical to what he just explained to you as well. And so, we kind of work that together, because we do have shared staff as well, so we're going to make sure that works together. So we met, kind of went through all that stuff, and we went through all the stuff with the cleaning supply. So you're going to see, virtually anything that you see in there is going to be similar to ours. There might be slight variations based on just building differences as well, so...
And as far as right now goes, because masks are mandated from ten and up, if we were to start school tomorrow, K-2 would be highly recommended, and then 312 would be mandated.
All right, Brook Elementary.
Okay.
Sarah?
Sarah, are you going to present any of your stuff?
I can.
No, I'm fine. I just don't want to steal your thunder. Mine's going to be very similar to what they're doing, but I wanted to go into kind of what we're planning on PD-wise, so that's a little bit different. Staff are going to be in my building, and I know a couple of others are scheduled. She hasn't met with them yet, so they don't have it on their roster. They're going to be working, if you approve those 11 days, to go through Google Classroom, work on getting the content in there so it's interactive. Getting it so that it is hyperlinked to the point that when they leave on Friday and they go home and they don't have any internet, they take their device with them. On Monday, everything's already on there. They don't have to have internet to do it, it's all right there. So, that transition will be like seamless. So we can still have office hours if they can get to a place where they can text or email their teacher, or they can call, they'll be available to call on Mondays. But I think our plan with our PD is going to be amazing to get the teachers ready, because it's going to give them time to learn. And for the most part, my building did a really nice job with Google Classroom, but there's always stuff that you can, they improved so much during this whole thing, Google did. So, we have lots more things to learn. Just like the fact that it'll import grades right into our progress book, so there's nothing they really have to do that's doubled. So it's nice, awesome stuff that they'll be able to do. And then they'll have time to just plan, because that's, that's going to be huge. I mean, transitioning from standing in front of the class to being able to record it and put it in there, it'll be nice to have that opportunity to be able to do those things, practice. Maybe do some lessons that are, I don't want to say generic, but ones that are, can be used at any point in time. So once they've taught something, then it's always good to review, so they could practice that.
And that's, and that's one of the reasons we went before one. That one-day remote is really going to be a practice. If the governor ever shuts us down, everyone will know what to do. Whereas last year, it was just thrown on us. This year, it will give us practice, so kids will know, oh, okay, I go remote, I know exactly what to do.
Yeah. Today, going through kinds of things, you know, we were talking about, or I was talking to some of my staff, and Google Classroom's going to be one of the first things we're teaching. But then, I was thinking, well, we probably need to teach them how to walk down the halls without touching the walls, and how to use hand sanitizer properly, because even though they've been in this world for a while, it's different when you're in school. So just some of those social norms that we're going to have to teach them, it's probably going to be more important these first couple of days versus Google Classroom the next, until we get good at it. But those are all things that we have in place. We have some scheduling things that we're working on, and a lot of just new normals that are going to be in place once everything gets started. And hopefully, they'll go back to normal eventually.
Thank you. Byzville Elementary, Mr. Columbus.
Okay, Mrs. Herr and I both basically worked on this pretty much together, and a lot of things are the same. One of the biggest changes we'll have, we're also doing the Google Classroom thing, same thing Shelley's doing. Really excited about that, because that means it levels the frame field for some of those kids that don't have internet. They can still do the work and turn it in, you know, the following Monday, or the following Tuesday. But one of the biggest changes I think we're making is we have teachers that have always traveled. They're half-day here, half-day secret, half-day byzville. And it also affects Shelley's building, and we just all kind of agreed on it, that we'd like to have them in one place, that's less people for them to be meeting every day. They're not going to carry anything from one building to another. So, it makes us change our schedule up a little bit. And we're still, still working on that, but we haven't quite tweaked exactly yet. But we think it might be possible that we will only have one teacher that has to travel, and we might be able to fix that too. So, I guess that's one of the biggest changes. Don, what do you think, what do you want to...
Scheduling, I think, is the big issue, and making sure that our kids are not in the hallway at the same time. So we've also staggered the specials, so that instead of having a group, a grade level three at a time go, we will be going individual classes. And so there'll be one group of eighteen in the hallway. You won't have sixty kids in the hallway at the same time. Lunches, the hallways will be one-way. The teachers bringing them back from lunch will kind of go and out of the room, maybe even outside during nice weather. And then we'll make sure that we're not passing each other, because when there's passing, there's touching, and there's just craziness. So, we're trying to avoid some of the craziness, and kind of make sure that we can manage all those things that are hard to manage.
All right. AD, Mr. Wheeler.
Well, athletics is changing day by day. Basically, as of right now, seven oh six, the sports that we offer in the fall, cross-country, volleyball, golf, are considered non-contact, in the governor's definition. And then football, and then cheerleading tied with football is considered contact. So what that means is our non-contact sports at this time are proceeding as normal, and we're allowed to have the school versus school competitions, as long as policies and procedures and mandates are put in place. And we've gotten a lot of recommendations from the National Federation of High School Sports, the High Department of Health, and OHSA. So, policies are put in place for each one of those sports at this time. Football, we are allowed practicing, which they started Saturday. They're allowed scrimmage in each other. We're on protocol, have, are hitting on Friday, which will be exciting. But at this time, there's no school versus school competition. All scrimmages are suspended. And we're hopeful that week one will start when week one's supposed to start. There's meetings going on tomorrow with the Coaches Association, OHSA, and the Lieutenant Governor around football specifically. So hopefully, we get some updates, and hopefully, we have a season. As far as spectators, still to be determined. But I will communicate that with all the community members and parents, this and the other. But it's not going to look the same. There's going to be mandates put in place that spectators will have to go through, and then obviously, we won't be able to more likely fill up our stands, so... So, day-by-day process. But everything's been communicated. I had a Zoom meeting with all my fall coaches last Wednesday, it went fantastic. We have a practice plan in place that's super safe. We are checking symptoms and temperatures of every athlete and coach before every practice, and it's going on digitally. So as soon as I check a temperature, we hit a save button, and it's timestamped of what sport, who's the athlete, any symptoms that they may have. Their temperature's on there, so it's fantastic. And that was approved by the health department, so hopefully, we don't have any issues. And if we did, we'll be covered with the policies and procedures that are currently in place.
And part of your packet too, is every kid that comes into school will have their temperature checked as well, and that's...
School policy, yes.
Yeah, that's correct. It's part of what you're going to vote on tonight. So, we will take the temperature of every kid who enters the school building.
And every staff member.
And staff members, yes. Thanks.
Under public participation, I see we've got a couple visitors. Did you guys come here to speak, or did you come here to listen?
I just came in there. We've got a long presentation.
Well, I don't know about a long presentation.
Go ahead.
My name's Brennan Dudley, I'm the administrator for the village of Byzville. A couple of you, well, no, probably none of you, but maybe Candy was here a couple of years ago. We were here before the board, and we were discussing the power plant and extending utilities to that facility. As you can see, that project is in full sway. And we are in the process of providing those services to the power plant. Water is complete, and they're utilizing that. We're working on the sewer provision at this point. The sewer project's been split into three phases. And we've been kind of trying to work back in here, of course, all this stuff happened over the last several months, and it's kind of been a process to get back here. But there are some things that we need from the district, and also, things that we're providing to the district. So, backing up, the conversation that we had here a couple of years ago was about the sewer line. And basically, the new schools and those kind of things, you're going to need to connect to that sewer line. Currently, you are connected to, it's called a package plant. Your sewer goes out off of Indian Lake Road there. You guys have had concerns with that before. Also, with new schools, extra people, there was concerns about the amount of waste that could be contributed to that facility. So that being said, you know, the power plant was kind of timely in their project as well. So basically, we are providing a sewer line from the power plant that goes down eight twenty-one, Cross Country Club Road, down Pioneer Road, all the way to our facility on Hope Avenue. All that being said, the things that we need from the school are, and I've got some paperwork to hand up for you to look at. Actually, some of these things we brought to the board here a couple of years ago, and I'm not sure what happened to them. They either didn't make it to the board, or what happened? So the first page here is a pre-annexation agreement. In order to provide sewer for the schools, we need a pre-annexation agreement, basically, that says we're providing sewer to you guys. And thus, if we ever get to the place where we annex, you wouldn't, you wouldn't fight the annexation, in other words. We're not even close to having that happen yet. We would have to annex all the way down eight twenty-one for that to happen. So that's really, but it has to take place in order for you to connect to the sewer system. The second page is a map of basically where the lift station for the power plant would be to be placed. That's at the corner of Marietta Road and Lucasburg Road there. It's approximately sixty by sixty by sixty by sixty square. We would need to acquire either one of two things. Either acquire that land in deed form from the school district, ownership-wise, or some sort of long-term lease or agreement, okay? As far as what the building would look like, I'll pass this around, you guys can pass it around. Be very similar to that type of facility. It's a small little building that serves as a lift station for essentially the power station, plus all the school would flow to that facility, and then be pumped up over Country Club Road, completely to our facility on Hope Avenue. So, now, one of the things that did happen here maybe last year was there was an utility easement that you guys completed and voted on. That actually was for Byzville Elementary in that parking lot, which I brought that with me because it wasn't completely filled out. Needs to be notarized, Mr. Detrow signed it, but nobody notarized it. So, after I got that paperwork, and it's been a little while, it's actually been about a year after I finally got it from Ally, which is not her fault, it's my fault, because she said I have it, and I just didn't get over here to get it though recently. But we'll need that completed. But we're at crunch time, basically. I just received notification today, I'm with Mr. Detrow here, I'm not going to... Notification today from the Ohio VPA that our Phase Two part of the project has been approved, which Phase Two is basically the line all the way down eight twenty-one, the line part of this. Phase Three will be the lift station. So we're at that place where we need, we need some decisions made here. If it's not something that, and I can't imagine why the district wouldn't want to connect onto that sewer, because it's going to be, you're going to have to do that, essentially. Then we will have to make some decisions on our end, and probably go back to the VPA and say, hey, we're not going to take that route anymore. We distinctly took this route to try to assist with the long-term plans of the district. And I think it worked out well for everybody. This is a line that, the cost of the line is being paid for by the power plant developers. So there's no cost involved for the district, there's no cost involved for the village of Byzville. That being said, the project is a village of Byzville project, okay? So the line will be owned by the village of Byzville. But we have an agreement with the power plant to cover the costs of that line over a period of years, so... So that's basically it. So the two things that we need from you guys is a decision on the pre-annexation agreement, which would simply be a common vote, I'm sure. The second part would be a decision on ownership versus long-term easement or lease for the sixty by sixty area there, at the corner of Lucasburg and Marietta Road.
And this would do away with the facility over here, the old facility, that all the sewage would go into this line going down eight twenty-one.
Correct.
Now that's, because there's been some issues with that in the past, I think, hasn't there?
Yeah.
There has.
Yeah.
And there's, and it's, it would be a process. It's not something that's going to happen overnight.
Yeah.
At that, when we talked a few years ago, a couple of years ago, the idea was when, as the schools are built, that was part of the plan to make sure that they're connected into this new sewer line. So, it will take a little bit of work on some of the existing schools, but that was kind of part of the discussion at that time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Dudley. Jay, you got anything?
Oh, he took the words out of mine.
I thought that, but I thought that actually.
Yeah.
Treasurer's report.
I have approval minutes from June twenty-ninth and approval financial report for June. That's it?
By relation to accept the treasurer's report. Motion. A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Humphrey. You have a discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Singleton? Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
Standing reports. Anything down to there anybody wants to speak to? No, and we'll move right on to Angie's. Angie or Dave's not here? I'll get it all. Business, is there any old business?
No, sir.
No old business? Superintendent's report.
Do you see Angie's? I'd like to voice...
Yeah, I can speak on that a little bit, if we do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, Angie let me know, actually during our free lunch program in the spring, that the middle school for the first time qualified for free meals for all students, breakfast and lunch. So, we joined some of the elementary's in that setup. So, I believe in high school's the only one left.
All elementary's, it's K-8.
Okay, so K-8, all this. So for the first time, all our students will be free introduced.
That's awesome.
And it looks like for this year, and then foreseeable future, hopefully.
Good. What, what, how do you qualify? What, do you not understand?
Enough bits, I have to fill out free lunch.
Enough of them, filling out the forms, percentage, and that's really the biggest one, just getting the forms.
That's what's wrong with the high school, and the forms back from kids.
As they get older, it's harder and harder.
Yeah, it is. It's too bad, because like I said, if we could get it for all, that'd be awesome.
You know, if the other buildings qualify, then that's...
Yeah.
She's ruling for the same kids, right?
Yeah.
I think the last thing she said was she's ruling for the school.
Last year, she was very close, thirty-year, yeah.
We have enough kids that qualify, I think, is just kind of getting the forms, and just getting the kids or parents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whether anybody will ever know it or not, they don't want to, you know, they don't want to be stigmatized.
Right.
But that might change now with the final form. Is it on final form?
It should.
So they're not taking that paper home anymore, so that could be why middle school is...
All right, Superintendent's report.
Yes, Superintendent would like to recommend the board pass the following, A, all the way through N.
A through N. Do I have a motion to accept Superintendent's report, A through N? Motion. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Oh, that's... I'll second.
Second, Mr. Humphrey. Discussion. Role call.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dutra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Superintendent would recommend letter N. Mr. Pursuit is head golf coach, effective eight one twenty-twenty, one year to the twenty-twenty-one school year, step seven plus.
Do I have a motion for item N?
Motion.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Role call.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Dutra?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Yerder?
No.
Superintendent would recommend letter O. Kelly Zender, head volleyball coach, effective eight one twenty-twenty, on a one-year to twenty-twenty-one school year, step seven plus.
Do I have a motion for item O?
Motion.
A motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mike. Discussion. Role call.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dutra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
I understand. Is there any correspondence?
Yes, sir.
No informational items we've already covered? We've already done executive session, so hopefully, not even needed another one. Nope. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, the next board meeting will be August twenty-seventh. Right, that's the date.
Yes, August twenty-seventh.
So we will have one in August.
Yeah, we'll need to get something approved for the light project for Huntington.
Gotcha. Okay, now do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Humphrey, second.
Role call.
I want to dance.
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey, dance. Mr. Dutra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?